Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our Franklin County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, February the fourteenth. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Commissioner Waymire?
Present.
Chair Renaud?
Present.
Vice Chair Oglesby?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
Okay, if you would, please stand and join in the pledge allegiance, followed by our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
By the God we come this morning asking your blessings on this meeting, that the things that we do here will be done without bias, will be done with thinking through the facts and help us to discern the things that would benefit the county. We're thankful we live in this country. We're thankful for those who have made it possible. We ask you to protect those that are serving now in areas that protect all of us, whether it's local or on an international front. May you continue to show your blessings on us, and we ask these things in the name of your son and our Savior. Amen. Okay, anything under correspondence and organizational business, Derek? If not, I know public comment, Janet?
Uh-uh.
Okay, today's consent agenda, approve the Franklin County Commission meeting minutes for February seven, and approve the tax change orders in the amount of a negative $1,826.40. Motion?
Sound moved.
Second. Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Renaud?
Yes.
Okay, our first item of business would be the Health Department Fourth Quarter Financial Report. Mitch?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Nothing too outstandingly different on the financial report for this last quarter. It was, fall tends to be our busiest time, so we did see roughly $140,000 worth of fee for service income, but out of that, as you could see, we have write-offs of $2,446.39, and that's on the sliding fee scale and unpaid bills, those kinds of things that we end up writing off at the end of the year, as well as the contractual obligations with our insurance companies of $10,453.30. I'd be glad to answer any questions I can. Our system has been down, so I've been having trouble pulling reports, so I'll...
Okay, we've got all the information here, so anybody having questions about any of If not, we need a motion then to...
Approve the write-offs?
Approve the write-offs for the fourth quarter of 2017.
Make the motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the 2017 fourth quarter write-offs.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Renaud?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Next item, approval awarding the bids for our 2018 Chip and Seal Project.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
You approved solicitation of bids for the Chip Seal Project. At your meeting on January seventeenth, bids were opened in the county clerk's office on February sixth. Bid Advance Brothers was the lowest responsible bid received. The request is a motion awarding the bid 2018 Chip Seal Project Advance Brothers, Inc., in the amount of $833,033.44.
For any other questions, maybe from Commissioners, I'd just like for you to briefly, if you would, tell us the advantage in the two materials, because this is the more expensive of the two materials that were bid.
It doesn't break windshields. It has passive solar in the reduction in snow and ice, and...
Doesn't polish?
It doesn't polish.
Yeah, okay. Any questions then about the two bids?
I don't have a question, but we started going to this, letting the bids out earlier, trying to get them there. We were getting put back on the back of the burner, and they were coming in way late, right when the weather was changing. I know it's up to them, but do we have any idea when they're gonna be here?
No, sir.
I hope you will stress to them that we'd like to have it a little bit earlier in the year than be the last one they get to before the winter.
Well, some of that was dependent on...
Material.
Arrival of cover material, as you recall.
Do you see any issue getting that material this year?
They were in here and did what cover material they could get, and then they had to leave and wait until more cover material was delivered at the end of August.
Do we know anything about whether there's gonna be any issues with the material this year?
I intend to visit with them about their subcontractor.
Commissioner Howard, we'll do what we can early on to try and ensure that they get here earlier. We'll, again, talk to them about their sub, try to make sure there's an adequate supply of cover material, and if I have to call them myself, I will emphasize that we would like to get them here prior to, you know, late August, September, what we've seen in the past, so we'll do everything we can to get them here.
And one more quick question. This is on the rotation. I know it's old Highway fifty. Is we in the states on the, on a this year, too?
Yes.
They'll be also this year?
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
Anything else? We have a motion for a bid for the 2018 Chip Seal Project Advance Brothers in the amount of $833,033.44.
Make the motion, or second, either one.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Renaud?
Yes. Our next item is approve the award for painting marking project.
At the same meetings that you allowed the solicitation of bids on the seventeenth, they were open on the sixth, right after the chip seal. The motion is to award the bid for the 2018 painted pavement marking project to Straight Line Striping in the amount of $42,962.60.
Jim, do you have what that was last year? How much?
No, I don't.
Seems like that's up from last year, but...
Well, we're...
Doing more?
We're chip sealing fifty miles. Granted, a lot of that's in subdivisions and it won't be painted, but it's comparable to what it was last year. It was over forty thousand last year.
The other bid is considerably higher, too.
Yes.
Reason?
Any explanation how they could be so far away from the other bid, or?
They may have anticipated items of work that the straight line paving didn't anticipate. Straight line paving is what used to be Midwest Striping. They've been doing our painting since I got, since before I got here. This other company is more accustomed to painting for Kansas Department of Transportation.
Yeah, one item on there, the fifteen thousand mobilization, the other company didn't have that cost in there for that, so...
No, they usually come down here from Douglas County. Not far to go, and we have...
I'd make a motion to award the contract to Straight Line Paving or Striping at the amount of $42,962.66.
Get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair Renaud?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Our third, our fourth item would be the approval of creation of emergency communications manager position. Morning, Nick.
Good morning, Commissioners. We had a lot of discussion on this at a study session a couple of weeks ago. One of the things that I was asked to bring to you was a schedule. Before we jump into that, I want to give you just a little bit of history on what we've been working on, where we've been at, and why we're recommending this. When, when we were asked to look at this and start a new department, you know, I've spent a lot of time with Sarah and talking to Derek and even Gala on what's gonna work. We gotta have a foundation. We've gotta have something to build from. If you look at dispatch centers throughout, they may have three different schedules. They may have a twelve-hour schedule. They may have an eight-hour schedule. They may have ten-hour people, and they juggle them all in there to make it work for them. But the most important thing we see is we've got a group of dispatchers in there that they haven't been able to fill to fill eight-hour shifts. So with what I feel I was tasked with was to come to you guys with recommendations to, to build that foundation so we can utilize this dollar an hour raise to, we can utilize the emphasis of this being its own department to hopefully attract people and build this up to what it can be. But to move forward with this, we gotta have a set schedule. We've gotta have something. So that's why the twelve-hour schedule looks appealing, is because it gives us that foundation. There's nothing that says as we grow, we might need to look at, do we need an eight-hour position in there to cover these peak times? I will tell you that Sarah and I have spent a day and a half figuring out how to pull data off of the CAD system, and that CAD system, stuff that has not been done here in the past, gives us some information that you guys probably have never been privy to, and I know I've never seen it when I'm working. And just to give you some, some just quick history before we start, in 2016, the dispatch center handled forty-three thousand eight hundred and forty-five calls. That's three thousand six hundred and fifty-four calls a month. That could be something as easy as a, an animal complaint to something as big as an MVA or some MVC on the interstate where it takes multiple agencies. So that breaks down to a hundred and twenty calls a day. We have a pretty busy dispatch center. If you look at 2017, they've handled forty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-six, which is three thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine calls a month of an average. So we've gotta figure out a way to make sure that we've got a schedule. We've got a way to get, to build throughout this. We've already broke down the, the hours, the peak times. We're looking at all that. You guys will be getting an end of the year for dispatch from me pretty quick. It shows you numbers that we've never seen before. You guys haven't. I haven't. So with that, I'm putting a lot of data together on what we need to do. But to be able to move forward, it's important that we get that foundation built. If you see on the thing I sent, this is the dispatch schedule. This is what you guys had asked for to see. Is there any questions on that, or how that would look?
How many day-one positions are there and day-two positions are there?
And like if you look across, and this is just a sample, if you look at Monday, the blue on Monday is a day-one position. So in that week, there are four. In the following week, there are three. And then it rotates back around to the next one, there's four, and the next one, there's three. That has the work week ending on Saturday or Sunday at 6:00 a.m. And it's the same way with all of them. One week, they work four days. The next week, they work three days, with every other weekend off. If you break out and you look at shift schedules, and that's what I can, you have done a lot on this, there's a lot of information, and you can go out and you can Google, and it's gonna tell you anything you want to hear. You know, they're gonna find places, I hate twelve-hour shifts. You're gonna find places that I love twelve-hour shifts. In Franklin County, we've been working twelve-hour shifts long enough that it's become a norm. It's become the norm for down there. They haven't filled it up. We have to make sure that we're doing the right thing by evaluating this to a case where we can, there we go, where we can start something fresh. With that, some of the perks of a twelve-hour shift is it does, it gives the dispatchers more days off. And if you look at any work week anymore, that, one of the surveys said twenty thousand shift workers in dispatch were interviewed. Seventy-four percent of them said they want to work more days with more days off. That's kind of the way we're seeing the world go, is people want to work longer hours and get more days off. But we also have to make sure we're not overworking them, and I know that's a concern of everybody's. With this, you know, we, right now, the schedule they work is four days straight, and then they get three days off, and then they work four days straight. This puts them in a situation where the longest they're gonna work is three twelve-hour shifts straight. So we're already eliminating that fourth day, which is hopefully giving them more time off. You look at sleep study patterns of people that work twelve-hour shifts versus eight, they're having more sleep. They get more sleep. They're home more often. They're coming to work better rested. That's all in data that you can pull and find. You do get some longer breaks. Instead of two days, three days off, you're getting the longer breaks. You take a vacation, two vacation days, they could have a seven-day vacation. So they can get away from that center longer to recuperate if they want to use vacation time. So with all that being said, that's the reason that I have came to you guys, talked, worked with Derek, to, to recommend a twelve-hour shift. And you know, as we grow, we've gotta be flexible. This might be in two years, we see, okay, our dispatch center's now handling sixty thousand calls. This isn't feasible. We need to adjust. But at this point in time to build, this is the foundation that I feel that I'm bringing to you guys is gonna fix some of the problems we have and get us at least something to budget for in the future. So that, that's what I have on twelve-hour shifts. Do you guys have any questions that I can answer on those that came up?
I don't have any questions, but the, the amount of calls to me is a little bit sleety. Sarah, remember she was there as probably as long as I was, but went back at one time where, let's say, an officer called and said, I'll be out of car, auto, to move a stick out of the road. They had ten-four. You got the stick. You got out of your car. You went on. Well, then back in the time, somebody decided for some reason, which I don't know, that anything you do, get a number for it. If you get out of the car and move a stick out of the road, dispatch is giving you a number. It goes down as a call. So there was a lot of calls back years ago that were just, you know, didn't amount to too much. It was just, you did it. It was, you went on. And then management decided they wanted numbers for everything to show more calls or whatever, so...
And I agree with you. I haven't dug down into the nitty-gritty. I can tell you, we can pull a call type, and Sarah's been pulling quite a bit of those, and, and we can actually, with that CAD system, break out each one of those. So is it a prowler? Is it a domestic? Is it a stick-in-or-a, you know, we can really, I think, see those and start to get a better idea of what those calls are. We're at the ground floor of this right now, but I do understand exactly what you're saying.
The schedule that you have right here in front of us, it takes how many people to fill that?
The schedule?
That twelve-hour?
It takes a minimum of eight people, so a minimum of eight people can fill that schedule. What we've done in the past, and I'll, and I'll give you guys a little bit of history that I've learned, on the eight-hour shifts in the past, there was overlap. So there was a chance there were three people in dispatch. At that point in time, they had ride days, and those ride days is where dispatchers would go out and ride with agencies to see what was going on in the field. The point of dispatch now with the call volume that we have, that we can see, it's beneficial that third dispatcher is in dispatch. We're trying to build something where we can have in our peak times, three dispatchers. So we can put together something, but if we do have fully staff, we might have three dispatchers there that can handle calls and take care of some of the stuff that's going on. We don't want to be kicking them out in a field ride, and we want them to be doing the job of dispatch. So that's the point of getting all this together, is if there's three people there, we want them to be dispatching and handling this call. So that's one of the things we've looked at, when I did talk to Sarah and have done some stuff, looking at the past. When there was eight-hour shifts, there was ride days, and that would be eliminated, and we'll be using those dispatchers with policies in-house to do that job.
So under the current plan that's proposed before us today, the ability to have a third dispatcher during what could be considered peak times is, is the ultimate plan here, correct?
Yes, sir.
And also, it would afford us the ability to have somebody who could train upcoming or new hire dispatchers before throwing them right into the fire, I guess?
That's true.
Getting them into the, into the program, and we don't have that ability now. Is that right?
Exactly. Right now, right now, with, with the way it's set up, the people get trained by whoever they get put with, and then with most senior dispatcher, we don't really have a good plan in place to get these people in.
And essentially, what I think I understood is that dispatch has been working twelve hours for at least two-plus years now?
Yes, off and on. Every time they get to...
Even though I don't know that I, I think that, I think that's personally still a long time to be in that position. We've been doing it. It's, it's kind of proven itself that it hasn't had any detrimental effects at this juncture, but...
We haven't seen any effects like that, and, and with this, we're trying to build a redundancy, because like, I'll be honest with you, we've had a case of the sick go through there, just like everywhere else, and it really, with the minimum staffing, if we were at eight people, we'd really be hurting. Honestly, Sarah's been a lifesaver, stepping up and working some of these shifts we needed to work to get through, and that's why we're talking about getting that redundancy, getting those, those positions in place to build this, so we can have the fallback without having to start begging people on the phone to come in and work.
And I, I think it needs to be emphasized as well. We've given the employees every opportunity, every opportunity to tell us that this, they don't want to do this, that they would rather go back to eights. Every one of them, save for one, enjoys working twelves and would like to continue that. Far be it for me to come to the board and recommend that they don't work twelves when I don't work in there and know what works for them, what works for their personal lives. And the other thing I would add is, we're not etching this in stone, and we've got good management over dispatch. You've got Sarah, you've got Nick, you've got myself. We will be managing them and monitoring them. If we sense that the twelve-hour shifts are causing performance issues or other issues, then certainly we'll take another look at it. But at this juncture, I see no reason to deviate from what we're doing and what we think's gonna work very well, so...
Derek, I was looking on that. Do we want to do this as one motion, the manager position and the twelve-hour shift as one motion, or separate that, because we decide to do something different on the hours later?
It, it makes no difference to me. You can make two separate motions if you would like.
Whether we wanted it as one, if we decide to do something different on the hours later, would it matter?
I think you could just come back later and make a one motion specific to hours, and I don't, it wouldn't affect anything, so...
Before you get there, Commissioner Howard, if, if you would, Nick, would you please just give me a little bit of what your expectations are for the communications manager position?
Yes, sir. Let me pull up jobs. Basically, it's what we're looking at with the communications manager. Somebody that's there, eight to five dispatch experience, and they will basically oversee the day-to-day operations of that. They'll be in charge of the training, the, the, just day-to-day stuff that goes on in dispatch. If, if we have a moment where somebody's gone, fill in some of that time during those days. They...
Is this a salary position?
Yes, sir.
And expectations for, I mean, it's eight to five Monday through Friday with whatever you need there, or what, get called, or not a thought?
Pretty much, yes. It's a, it's a five Monday through Friday with the ability to, if there is some vacancies we are unable to fill a certain way, they may have to step in and fill one of those shifts. But what this will basically give us is the opportunity to really dig and look at the job descriptions below that and, and start putting in some positions in the middle where dispatcher one, dispatcher two, and supervisors are better ways we can run that dispatch center at the employee level, that maybe they don't need to be a supervisor. We can start getting these training positions and start getting those people we need to start getting in that, in that, that level, so...
I assume they have the flexibility then to, if they know that tomorrow an employee needs to leave early three hours or come in late two hours, they can adjust theirs to cover those and...
Yes, sir.
As, as a salary position, okay?
That's correct.
And we, we talked about this a little bit. It still puts us money-wise under where we were at, even with this manager position.
Yeah, and I believe we're about fifteen grand under where we would be otherwise, so...
With the manager?
Yes, even still with the manager. And to speak to what you're talking about, Chair Renaud, that is, I mean, the primary benefit of having a position that's exempt from the FLSA is that they, you know, we might set, I mean, you might say my hours are eight to five, but I can tell you I don't work eight to five. I mean, they're always varying, and I think Sarah understands that that's part of the, the gig, and having her be able to float and cover for illnesses, vacations, that's an added benefit of a, an exempt position, so...
Is there a limit with one person can work, how many hours one person can work at any one time? Like if somebody calls in sick, and our dispatchers are asked to stay over, do they stay over a whole shift or six hours?
You have to pay overtime if they're a non-exempt position, but if they're salaried, then no, there's no limit. And Gala is here, and she is the county's expert on that, but just as a broad overview, there isn't a limit, no.
And with, with like the EMS department, we've got policies in place, and I'm sure Commissioner Oglesby is familiar with this, too, from working at, so Howard, from, you've got to cover twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and with that, you have to have policies in place to, how are we gonna do that? Right now, those policies aren't there. With this position, with, with adding twelve hours, it allow Sarah and I to get some policies, or Derek, to make it so we set those limitations. How many days in a row can you work? How many of these, what is what we feel fair, so we don't overload our dispatchers? Like right now, like in EMS, we say you can't work more than, more than three days in a row without a break, and that's a lot of hours. So we're gonna have to create those, and to create those, like I said, this goes back to, we gotta have a foundation to start building on.
As, as Commissioner Howard mentioned there, there's actually three things to this, the twelve-hour shift schedule, the emergency communication manager position, and the grade twenty-two coming in on that, too. So however you want to do that motion, if somebody's inclined to do so, I'd welcome it.
Got it on your cover sheet. That being said, Mr. Chair, and I make a motion to approve the Franklin County Emergency Communications Center to utilize twelve-hour shift schedules and approve the creation of the emergency communication manager position at a grade twenty-two.
All right, a motion? Second, thank you, Roy.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Renaud?
Yes, and thank you, Nick, and your staff, Sarah, and the rest of you that have worked on that. I think it's a great, Derek, all that input, and we wish you the best and keep us updated and see how it's going and monitor that.
I will. Thank you, and I will be bringing some kind of report to you guys to give you some more information. Thank you.
Okay, the next one is considered for approval, changes to the Franklin County Personnel Rules and Pay Plan. Gala?
Good morning, Commissioners. It appears that we have a number of things that we need to change in our personnel rules, based upon some of the past actions of the board, as well as some of the actions today. So I'm trying to group a few of those together, because every time we make a change to the personnel rules or our pay plan, it requires a resolution. So I don't want to make you guys a resolution happy here. First on here, on January, I believe Erin Laurie from the Health Department brought before you of what they were proposing to be a worksite lactation policy, which they would like to see included in our personnel manual. So I've attached that here. In some of the previous board meetings, you all have approved positions such as the one you have today. Among those were medical counts manager in the Health Department, the tourism coordinator in the tourism, the finance officer, and then today, the emergency communications manager. So each of those, as you, as you have approved them, they should be placed on our pay plan and have, but we've not revised the pay plan by resolution to include those. So I'm asking at that time that we, at this time, that we take a look at that and include those in changes. Then, given the fact that you have approved the twelve-hour shifts for dispatch, I felt like it was important for us to go back and take a look at the work week per FLSA, as it's going to work best for dispatch. In addition to that, take a look at our accrual of sick leave and vacation leave and our personal leave for people who work twelve-hour shifts. To that point, I think that probably the first thing I want to take a look at is actually changing in our policy, and at the addition of the worksite lactation policy, we felt like it would fall best in section sixteen point six, which is other policies. It's not specific. There's a multitude of varying policies in that section. In renumbering that, then, the other policies in, in section sixteen would have to be renumbered after that. With regards to the work week for the dispatch shift, they're going to need to have their work week, with regards to calculating overtime, begin at a different time than what we have our other... uh, with regards to calculating overtime, begin at a different time than, uh, what we have our other work weeks. So for eight-hour people, our work week typically begin Sunday, Monday at midnight and go to Sunday, Monday the following week at midnight. With our sheriff's deputies, theirs, uh, work, they work a little bit different. Uh, theirs is every two weeks and that's based upon their 86 hours for overtime. It provided they work more than that in a two-week schedule. For eight hours, it's if they work more than 40 hours in that one week period. So with dispatchers and the research that Nick has done on the shifts, uh, we need to set a new work week for that group and that work week needs to begin at 6:00 AM every Sunday and go to that same point the following week. What that means is hours worked above 40 in there, that defined work week would then constitute overtime being paid to those employees. So I did do a typo here. I got finger happy. Uh, in the second line, I have a one hyphen hour shifts. My two, my fingers were just too fast and the two didn't hit, so that has been changed and will be changed in the final document that we print.
It should be a 12-hour shift.
Should be 12-hour shifts, correct. Um, with this, I also felt like we needed to take a look at shift differential. We have road patrol deputies who work 12-hour shifts and they don't get shift differential. Uh, this group of dispatchers I'm not proposing also get shift differential. There are other perks and benefits that these positions have. Um, and so with the shift differential, I felt like we needed to go back and define this section a little differently to basically clarify that people who are required to either work the 24 per day or extended hourly coverage that designate three eight-hour shifts should get the shift differential. So that separates our 24-hour EMS. They don't get shift differential and it separates our 12-hour shift people. They don't get shift differential. So I hope to have clarified that. Then if we take a look at, um, section 5.3, uh, the first paragraph, um, I feel it's important for the commission and the county administrator, either one or the other, to have input, uh, with regards to departments who choose to move to 12-hour shift schedules or do something other than the eight hours that we typically have, uh, been working. So I've revised this section or proposed the revision here, um, in the second sentence that, uh, when these kinds of changes occur, that it has to be either approved by the Board of Commissioners or by the county administrator, uh, so that we have department heads who are actually getting that process approved before they're moving to the 12-hour shifts such as occurred today or changing that to something different. I, I feel like that, that's important. So this is, uh, kind of defining that particular addition that I feel like would be, uh, more clear and also, uh, give your input, so it can't just be arbitrarily done, if that makes sense. Uh, then in section 5.3B, um, I felt like adding the word approved, uh, in that phrasing. Employees working approved 24-hour or 12-hour shifts, meaning that has got to be approved either by the administrator or the Board of Commissioners per the previous paragraph number one. And then again, that same kind of terminology in section 5.4B, the last bullet having to do with, um, the sick leave accrual for this group. Basically, this puts people who are earning, uh, are working 12-hour shifts, earning the same accrued vacation leave and sick leave. It just makes it consistent. So deputies who are working 12-hour shifts get the same as dispatchers who are working 12-hour shifts. And that's the end of the personnel, like, policies as such. But then also on the pay plan, I've added those positions that you all have approved, um, in addition to the one that you approved today, so that they're reflected appropriately in our pay plan. Have any questions?
Nick, does, uh, EMS, do you rotate shifts? I know you're on 12-hour shifts, but do you, do they rotate ever so often?
We do 20, we do 24-hour shifts, so.
So you're on the 24s?
It's an ABC shift that rotates through the week.
One thing, I got a little on the shift differential, I know that with the sheriff deputies, they rotate. They'll be on the 12 hours, but they'll be every, I think it's three-month rotation or something. They'll rotate to days. The dispatchers aren't going to be rotating at all. They're going to be staying on the night shift if they're night shift. So I think that's a little bit of difference between whether you're going to be on nights and then rotate off or you're going to be on nights for good.
Uh, and I understand what you're saying. I think to, to speak to this, and Nick and I have talked about this, um, being in this rotation, these employees are entitled to some other benefits that other employees are not, such as three days off in a row or taking two days off and having an entire week. And so they have some benefits that eight-hour employees do not have, plus they've got scheduled built-in overtime. So there are, and I've checked in other agencies as well, there are difference, you know, differences in that, but that's primarily the reason why those groups do not get shift differential, because they have other offsetting perks, so to speak.
Gaila, they accrue leave at a higher rate too, correct?
Yes, they do.
I mean, they get an extra four hours of leave each month from working twelves, whereas eight-hour employees only accrue eight. So that's, if you were to attach a value to that, that would be very significant.
I agree, but also the 12-hour employees that's on day shift all the time get those same, uh, benefits too.
Yes, they all do. Mm-hmm, that's true. Yeah, I think personal day is the same. They get a 12-hour personal day to cover their entire shift.
I think it's hard sometimes to put a, a value on day versus night because I've seen so many people with childcare and other things, they prefer to have their spouses opposite each other, whatever they can save on daycare. They can save on a lot of things by not both working days and being off nights or vice versa, so. Uh, unless we find that to be a problem, there may be just as many people, a demand for this shift as for that. And then I would assume anytime there's an opening, anyone can always, uh, you know, apply to be for that position or whatever, so.
Uh, to that point, it's interesting because Nick and I, whenever he was taking a look at a floating person in EMS, that would only be a 40-hour per week person, he said, "Man, I don't know whether I'm going to be able to find anybody who just wants 40 hours," you know. Uh, that has not been a problem. He has many, many people who opt for the 40 hours for the very reasons you said. It fits better with their schedule as opposed to, uh, doing the 24s, so.
Nick, if, if the pay period's 6:00 AM to, to start the, uh, work period, is the shift change going to be 6:00 AM or something different?
The shift will be 6:00 A to 6:00 P and 6:00 P to 6:00 A.
Any other questions then for what Gaila's brought to us? There's a lot of changes there.
I can only say we hope we caught them all.
Okay. I want to make the motion then to approve the requested changes to their personnel rules and pay plan?
This is my resolution. Do you have a number?
Eighteen oh nine.
Eighteen oh nine.
Eighteen oh nine. Make a motion to approve the requested, uh, changes to the Franklin County Personal Rules and Pay Plan.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire? Chair Renaud?
Yes, and, and again, thank you, Gaila, and I'm sure you've worked with Derek and everything from those changes, looking at our policy and making sure there are not any inequities and everything else, so thank you very much.
You're quite welcome. Thank you for approving all of those. And Janet, will you get the resolution then signed and, okay, thank you.
Okay, that takes us to staff reports. Derek? Nick, anything else? You're good, okay. Uh, Susan?
Real quickly, Commissioners, um, just want to welcome you all to the Community Butterfly Project. Personally invite you all to attend. It's the public launch. We will be hosting that at Washburn this Friday. Um, the event itself is kind of more like an open house. It runs from two to four. But Dave Lowenstein, who had the opportunity to visit with you last week, will actually be talking to the public from about two to 2:45. Um, we've reached out to a lot of community members throughout all of Franklin County and we hope that they will participate and learn how their group can get involved in the community project and we hope that you would attend as well and there's going to be cookies. That's always a good one.
Okay, so it's Friday, this Friday?
It's Friday, mhm. Friday, February 16th.
Two to four?
Two to four, Washburn.
Towers.
Mm-hmm, and it's actually in the multipurpose room and it's right outside of where the big mural is there, so we thought it'd be a, a perfect spot to launch this project.
Okay, great.
Appreciate it. Have a good Valentine's Day.
Okay. Jim, Janet? Second, second round?
I'm sorry, I might get back. I wanted to inform you, uh, we did get all the bariatric equipment in that we purchased in December. Uh, we're in the process now at the EMS department of installing the, uh, the winch ramp system. Uh, once we get all that done, I will do a demo for the commission, so you guys can come over and, uh, take a look at it and see how the whole system works together, so I did want to inform you we did get that in, so thank you.
Okay. I see Mr. Harris is here from the Wellsville area. Derek, can you tell us a little bit about maybe where we're at with the radio system then all coming online? Everybody's radio systems and stuff. Are we still looking at April or?
Um, I'm not sure we're going to quite have it up online in April. I think we're, progress is being made and I think it's going very well. Um, I'm in fairly frequent communication with Alan Radcliffe on that and I know everyone's pleased with how it's went with the particularly cold winter and cold spell we had. I think that kind of shut them down. I, I have no obstacles to report, but I'm also not sure, we might be testing in April, but I don't believe we'll be fully online then. But I will have Alan get in here, um, maybe as soon as next week and give the board a more comprehensive update on that.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea, I think. I, I did have an entity ask me, well, hey, we paid our money last fall and we still don't have anything, you know, where we at? And it's like, okay, I'll see on that, so, sounds good.
But I'll just add to that, the emergency management department does have all the radios and they've, um, they've let me know and they've let all the entities know if they want to come and look at their equipment, but if they take them before they're, before, before they're programmed and tested on the system, then we would, Motorola would no longer take responsibility for them, so.
Okay.
Most entities have opted not to take theirs.
Right, right, I'm sure that, yeah, hopefully so anyway. Okay, great, thank you, Janet. James, is that a little, yeah, so. Anything else? Oh, James has it there. Oh, yeah, James, you got anything you want to bring to us?
Just a quick update. Um, just so you guys know, uh, next week, uh, I will be traveling, uh, in regards to the marketing efforts for Proximity Park. Uh, I'll be attending the, uh, Southwest Association of Rail Shippers Conference. Um, that will have, uh, a ton of key decision-makers, uh, from companies and businesses that, uh, do a lot of shipment by rail, obviously. Uh, so people we, we definitely want to become friends with. And then the week after that, uh, I will be traveling, uh, to the Retail Leaders, uh, Supply Chain Annual Conference. Uh, this is actually an opportunity that, uh, was presented, uh, to us to partner, uh, with Kansas City Smartport. Um, they're the lead, uh, agency on this. Uh, they're actually having a booth at that, uh, trade show and conference. Um, we, uh, get the opportunity to, to travel with them. We get, uh, our, our proximity park logo on some of the, um, booth material that they have. They put together a postcard that goes out to, uh, all the attendees in advance and then afterwards, we actually get a copy of that attendee list with all their contact information as well too. So another great opportunity to get our foot in the door as it pertains to, uh, all those retailers and, and their supply chain and logistics operations and so. Um, and then lastly, uh, just so you know, on March 8th, we are going to be having a, an FCDC, uh, investor networking event. Uh, that's a Thursday afternoon slash evening. It's going to be from 4:30 to 6:30 PM, uh, at Smoke Creations in their basement, so. I can answer any questions anybody may have. Thank you.
Commissioner reports?
I haven't been anything since the last.
Well, Monday I attended the, uh, local farm and food marketing assistance education that was right here in the annexes chambers that Heather Morgan presented. It was a, it was an informative meeting of ways people can, um, sell their local agricultural products. Uh, I think it was, I think it was good to be able to get that group together and, and open up maybe some ideas of ways that Heather could, said she could help market things and ways to produce some of these things. Didn't, didn't realize there was a kitchen in Olathe from the Kansas State University that was available. I think, uh, that was a good option for people to look at to be able to produce some things and, and maybe make some income as well. And, uh, and then yesterday I did attend the, uh, Chamber of Commerce Board meeting and it was informative. Uh, they had a very productive banquet as far as being able to come out in the plus side for their finances on that and, and also raise some significant money through the auction that took place as well that, that they donate back into local, uh, charities and, and entities within our community, so that was, it was a good meeting.
Roy?
I had the Conservation District luncheon the other day and went to the, uh, Chamber of Coffee last Friday for the, uh, couple of cars changed their name to Noe Star and they're building another, uh, facility in Longmont. It's going to be for basically Alzheimer's patients and that's going to be another, uh, opportunity for people of, uh, facing that situation. And that's it.
I forgot, I forgot Conservation District, Roy. Glad you brought that up. I did attend that also.
Okay, um, and, and myself as well. Then Monday night I was at the Lane City Council meeting. Um, obviously water, water concerns, water bills, water chlorination. In fact, uh, it seemed like a lot of our smaller cities, and I don't hear so much from Williamsburg or Pomona, but it seemed like Lane and Rantoul and even Wellsville, you know, the water supplies and the chlorination and having staff to adequately do that is a challenge for small cities. Uh, they also got a check from the county for $150 from that recreational fund that, uh, they have. And Janet, you might say where that money comes from, it's from the?
So that money comes from liquor by the drink. Um, we used to get substantially more money in the fund when we had, uh, more, um, alcohol establishments out in the county, but currently the only one we have that's paying into that is the Kansas Bell Dinner Train. So we, for a long time, only had two, which was, um, Cheyenne Country, uh, and the train, so now we're down to one. So very minimal amount comes in there, but, you know, these smaller organizations that we help with that money appreciate every little bit they get. If they can, if they can buy a picnic table or another piece of, uh, playground equipment to put in their community, they really appreciate that and we always have a really good response from Lane. Most of the time we get something from Rantoul, Williamsburg, um, and the other, uh, recreation commissions that make up West Franklin Recreation, so.
Lane was very appreciative of that, that money and, uh, like you said, they did purchase a picnic table for their city park and whatever and so. It's a little bit, but every little bit helps those small communities.
We have had questions in the past about Ottawa and we, and you guys did specifically eliminate Ottawa because they do get their own liquor by the drink money, um, from all the drinking establishments that are inside the city limits of Ottawa. This money comes strictly from outside the city limits, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, they, they also asked a question about the dates for the, you know, try some city people and we're working on that, I understand, and I've let them know that too, so. Uh, now next Monday is a holiday, so there will not be a study session and, uh, so we'll meet again on the 21st. Also on the 21st will be a luncheon at the city hall. Any other thing else? If not, motion to adjourn? All right, motion, move to that. Everybody have a favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.